Dr. Spiege, I want to discuss what is expected to be your recommendation regarding personnel.
We are feeling some positions that are open right now. You know, next Thursday is our last board meeting before Institute, school starts the Friday, before that Thursday night we'll have the next board meeting. So just today, we had, you know, retiree and then someone who's taken a job closer to home and that's being approved tonight. So those things will continue to happen and so unfortunately, we're gonna, as hard as we've tried to get all this done by next, you know, really the only board meeting before the teachers come back or the employees come back for Institute, there will be some that'll be on that October, excuse me, August 4th board meeting agenda. So they're working fast and furiously right now to get as many of them as we can that have been posted for the appropriate timeline on next week's agenda. So some of those will probably be coming in literally the day of because of the posting requirements and so forth. We'll get those to you as quickly as we can.
Dr. Currie, any questions about them?
No, not at all.
Ms. Jantr. Ms. Thompson. All right, item number two, interaction items changes to the supplemental positions. Is this combined with item three?
No, no, this is, these are like our coaching and other band director positions. All that has, I'm just keeping you posted in terms of changes. So everything that's in black text here that's not highlighted has already been approved by the board. But what you see, that this is the same person but highlighted, that person has taken another job somewhere else. So we had already approved that they were on the list for this year. So all I'm doing is we're updating this and sort of asking you to approve the updated list. It is possible that before next Thursday, we could have some additions with some of the other hirings, but, so there could be an adjustment to this list before Thursday. If so, we'll send you those updates, but as of right now, this is all we have.
Dr. Currie, any questions?
No questions.
Ms. Jantr.
No.
Ms. Thompson. Well, for the most part, most spots are covered. We're down to one.
Yeah, we have a few left. We're going the wrong direction with this particular agenda item, so hopefully we can add names instead of subtract them.
All right, number three, phone interaction items is the Appleton contract. Will it be considered as the same way it had been before?
No, I do, I do have some information and I guess I'll ask you all to bear with me for a few minutes. There's been-
Let me set up a quick start. Keep in mind that Appleton and AEA have already approached the board and already made presentations to the board. So this is not the time where we're looking for those things to happen. This is just a follow-up discussion after hearing both of those presentations.
I will mention, and they've been great to accommodate our change in schedule multiple times, but Ray Rehnen, you've already met him with Appleton, and Dr. Kovacs, who you have not met, both here with Appleton. They're here tonight in case there are any questions after we kind of go back through this information again, to answer any questions you have. That's why they're here tonight. So I've kind of put together some notes for myself to sort of keep me on track, but there has been a lot of information shared about this topic. I feel like there's been a lot of misinformation shared about the topic, so I want to kind of take a few minutes to address all of that as best I can. I've given you a little packet of some different documents and so they're in the order that I'll kind of mention them, so I'll try to refer you to those documents as I go through, but you might get that before the meeting started. But just some reminders about this proposal. When I arrived in Scottsboro last January, as you all know, we were facing major financial issues. You can call it a crisis if you want to, and I don't think that would be overstating it. And that fact became more and more evident to me over the course of the year. My responsibilities include taking the lead on straightening out this situation, and I take that responsibility very seriously. I have worked hard along with our CSFO to communicate to this board, our administrators, our employees, and the entire community really regarding our situation. And we included not just our situation in Scottsboro City, but in general, how our public schools funded for people who may not understand that, and then also, what are we going to do about it? This is the current situation, so what is our plan? And one of the, y'all may remember, I met with the board members individually when I first arrived, as I did many of our employees, and in the very first one-on-one meeting that I had, one of you actually mentioned you'd like for us to look into contract services. I knew just enough about that to make me dangerous at the time, but I did make a note of it. You may recall that in board meetings, I've mentioned several times that as we were discussing finances, that one of the many options that we were just, just looking at were contract service options, and that at some point in time, I might bring something to the table for you guys to review. One reason I did that is to kind of gauge the climate of this board to see, you know, do I have a board member who is vehemently opposed to this idea or anything like that? Not detecting that, I continued to press forward. Becky and I began exploring contract service options last spring and summer. However, as you all know, other financial matters, payroll issues and other things became more pressing, so we did focus more of our attention in those areas, keeping this in the back of our minds. But during this past school year, we pulled Mr. Willoughby into this conversation and we earnestly really began to look into our options. There are several vendors out there that provide these kinds of services, although they, there's a lot of variety in the kinds of things that they do provide in terms of contract services. After reviewing the options and talking with vendors and also talking with other superintendents and school system representatives who have used Appleton or use, currently use Appleton or who are considering doing so, and then after meeting with representatives on multiple occasions, it became clear to us that Appleton, you know, I said, had their act together more than any other company we reviewed. They were able to answer our questions to our satisfaction and we decided we wanted to explore this option. At that point, I had a decision to make. When is the right time to introduce this to the board? Right or wrong? I decided to wait until I knew what positions would be vacant. We had seen enough to know, you know, which positions it might, you know, make sense for us to do this, but I didn't know what positions we would have available, open vacant this spring. So I was afraid that if I presented the idea without being able to say what positions we were going to look at first, that it would basically open this conversation of misinformation that has happened ultimately anyway. So I wanted to be able to explain how we plan to utilize the option, at least how we would get started with it. So as you remember, I introduced this proposal at our May work session, and my intent was for the board to take action at the June 2nd meeting. For reasons I'll kind of discuss in a moment, I decided to extend the discussion and allow more time for questions and information. We unexpectedly had a delay in our work session, which really just gave more and more time for all this misinformation to circulate, but it is what it is. So what I want to do first is try to help us refocus kind of the original proposal. As you recall, when I presented this, there are two main reasons that I am proposing that we look at this option. Number one is to save money. As you know, we have uncovered every rock in our, in our system. We've said that over and over again. We're not leaving any rock unturned. We've made a lot of adjustments, a lot of changes to see how we can save money, and we've tried to limit those money-saving measures to limit the, you know, impact of how it might compromise the quality of the educational services for our students. Any, my attitude is that any dollar that we save is money that can be repurposed in other ways. As we've talked about before, we have whole categories of very important items, even resources, that we are not including in our budget. One big example is technology. We've not budgeted a dollar for technology in this school system in years. That cannot continue, and so we've got to find a way to make these adjustments. The number two reason is flexibility. Using contract services could provide some flexibility that could be beneficial financially and otherwise as the needs change, even during the course of a school year, but certainly from one year to the next. I will tell you that having been at the superintendent's conference last week and just having more time to talk to other systems who are utilizing this service, I probably had more of them than not say that the primary benefit of this for them was the flexibility that it offered in the services. So we also, we have identified that we do have some retired public education employees who may want to continue working after retirement, and this would afford some specifically identified retirees who've indicated an interest in continuing to serve in some capacity. This would perhaps enable them to do that. So these reasons, these two reasons that as I first introduced this, despite the propaganda that has been communicated since I first introduced the topic, these reasons have not changed. So those are still the same two reasons that I proposed this in the first place. And as you know, there has been a lot of, the only information that's been circulated about this topic has come from AEA representatives or employees who have heard information from AEA. So what I think is important to do is to take, as quickly as I can, take the different pieces of information that have been communicated and make sure that you have the correct information, the information from me addressing these items. I've talked with Ms. Bernison and I've shared this with her. I have been extremely disappointed with the way AEA has handled this proposal, has responded to this proposal. Prior to this situation, I would say that she and I had a very good working relationship. I think she would agree with that. This situation has changed that, and it didn't change on my end, and I want to make sure that everybody is clear that, you know, I went out of my way to try to communicate with her about this proposal beforehand. I was very well aware, I was not, you know, naive about the fact that, you know, what AEA's position is on this matter, and I respect that position. I understood before I called her that this is not something that they are promoting and in fact would be opposed to. So I knew perfectly well their position, but I contacted her anyway, primarily because of our relationship. I would have probably done it anyway, but just the way we had communicated in the past. In our initial conversation, she did, you know, state what I expected, that AEA is opposed to these kinds of contract services. I already knew that, but she did say that she was glad that we weren't going to be firing or non-renewing employees to make room for Appleton employees. I assured her, as I have done repeatedly to any, and consistently since then, to anyone who has talked to me about this, that I had no intention of doing that, and I usually tacked on that Appleton does not even recommend that you do that. Maybe there are systems that have done that, but it would be against even their best advice in terms of how they would, how they would recommend you utilize their services. So rather than communicate though in that same manner, there has been a lot of information that has been put out in various ways, and I have not been included in these communications. I think I have most of them now, but they've been given to me by different people. So I want to just kind of go through some of this, really just to kind of address some of the information that's out there so that we can, I can share what I believe to be the correct information about this. Copy of a postcard that was distributed prior to our last board meeting. I'll just tell you that I was particularly concerned with the tone of the message in this statement, the phrase, you know, "We must fight this now, you could lose your job." You know, I had already addressed the fact that nobody was losing their job. I had said that repeatedly. I have continued to say that repeatedly, and quite frankly, you know, the last time I checked, we're all on the same team together, trying to do what's best for kids, and I think we can disagree respectfully and professionally about what is best. I don't think we have to agree. I've said before that, you know, if everybody agrees all the time, that somebody's not needed, but I think we can do it respectfully and professionally about what is best without talking about fighting per se and language like that. I have no intention of fighting our employees nor a desire to do so. I appreciate our employees. All of our employees provide a great service for our students, and so for something to degenerate into a fight would be terribly unfortunate considering that we're all here to serve the same students. While we can agree or disagree about what the best way is to go about that, I think it's important that we approach these conversations with respect. The, the second document is, and again, I did not receive a copy of this letter, the, our board members received a copy, and they assumed, I understand why you assumed, that I had received a copy of this letter, but I did not receive a copy of this letter, and until y'all realized that I didn't have it, at which point you gave me a copy. And there were several things in the letter that were concerning to me. I'm just going to kind of quickly touch base. You have a copy of the letter there. One of the things mentioned in this letter is that school employees are the true heart and soul of our school system. I could not agree more with that statement. It's commented that they care about students and what they do is more than just a job. Nobody is disputing that and assuming that we're, we're assuming we're all here to do the same thing, to serve students. So one thing that's mentioned though is that if contracted people were involved in any aspect of the school organization, that that relationship and the dedication to the serving the students would be lost. I don't know of any evidence to back that up, and no, no evidence has been shared with me that backs that up. Even in public education, there are examples, unfortunately, in our own school system, we've had situations with employees that we've had to address and deal with, that you can definitely make a strong argument that the needs of students were not being considered first and foremost. I'm sure that can happen in any organization, but I have no evidence to support the fact that as a whole, employees provided in this manner would not care about our kids. On down in there, one of the things mentioned was how we would not have control over issues that arise, and that has repeatedly been, I think it was shared in our presentation from Appleton, that, you know, they repeatedly stated that we have control, we have say, we have, just as we do with our employees, and you could make an argument in some cases even more so. At the top of the second page, you know, what type of person do you have applying? Aren't our children worth that extra cost? I believe they are. I have repeatedly stated that we will not compromise quality. That's one of the things, if we, if we try this and we get into this, over and over again, I have said, we will not compromise quality. So if we were to find, whoa, this is not what we need for our kids, then we would back up on that, as they would expect us to do. Another talking point that's been out there is basically that it would erode the local economy and, and Appleton employees would come from other places. They have indicated and explained in our last meeting that they would recruit locally and have a pretty aggressive campaign to recruit locally for these employees. One of the things that's also been mentioned over and over is how this would affect the teacher retirement system of Alabama, and I just want to mention that, you know, I guess the question posed to you as board members was, have you considered this? What I would say to you is, if I asked that question, is yes, and I have also considered what happens when we have to eliminate 11 or 12 positions as we just had to do this spring? And I know Ms. Bernison and I discussed that fact, you know, that also impacts, you know, it's the same argument, basically, one or the other way, that impacts the retirement system as well if that case holds for contract services. But the point is that, you know, we are going to have to save money one way or another, and this is one way to look at it without compromising quality. We do have to get ourselves in fiscal, a fiscally sound state of affairs in the school system, and we've got to do that without raiding our capital funds. That, that time has passed where that's even an option anymore. One of the things mentioned in the letter is that there are lots of other ways to achieve the goal of getting ourselves financially healthy. I would love to hear any of those ideas. None have been presented to me or Becky or these board members, I don't think, that we have not looked into. We have looked into every money-saving option that we can think of, and again, keeping in mind that we want to do everything we can to protect, you know, the, our students, their, the quality of their instruction. One of the things at the bottom of that second page, it mentions that when you privatize, you lose a highly skilled, experienced and dedicated workforce. I just want to remind you, and then it goes on to talk about basically how jobs in school systems are different than jobs outside of the world. Just to remind you that Appleton provides for education only, so they're serving schools and school systems and educational services only, while there are other contract services that we looked at that do provide outside of education. And as I've said over and over again, not to repeat myself, but we, we're not going to compromise quality. That's not going to be satisfactory for our own employees, and it wouldn't be satisfactory for anyone coming into our system in any other capacity. I think most of the rest of what's in this letter has been addressed. I do want to say though, that there's a statement in the last paragraph, "Think about the students of Scottsboro City Schools and make the right decision on this issue." And I guess I just want to say that for me, it's insulting for there to be an implication that we're not thinking about the best interest of students. As, there's a list in your packet, there are 22 other school systems in Alabama that utilize Appleton services, and there are more coming on board every day. You have a list of a few of those there. I don't, maybe they exist, but I don't, I haven't interacted with another superintendent that wakes up in the morning thinking, what can I do today to destroy kids? That's the exact opposite of what we're trying to do, certainly the exact opposite of what I'm trying to do. So all we're doing is looking at, trying to get in a better fiscally responsible state, and this is one other option to do this. One of the questions that was asked of me is, you know, what's going to happen if this is successful and basically it grew? And so my definition of success is we save money and we don't compromise the quality of education. So I guess, not that we're trying to overtake things with this, but I guess my question would be, well, why wouldn't you try to be as fiscally responsible as possible and provide the best quality? So, so that would just be my response to that. The, very quickly for the rest of them, I wanted to make sure I addressed all the issues in this particular letter, but you have in there also, there was a Facebook post that I got a copy of. Again, it talks about losing control over employees, it talks about tax dollars going outside the system, and what our children deserve, and I've already stated, I think we all agree that our children deserve a lot. You have an email in there too. There was one specific email that was sent, I think to Mr. Eustace that he forwarded to the rest of the board. I just want to make sure that question was asked and answered, and Appleton did provide a response to that, having to do with unemployment taxes, so we've addressed that issue. The other documents that you have in your packet, I actually just received this today. I had missed this. I do look at the Clarion every time, every time it's published, I somehow miss this ad. Apparently, there was an ad in the, in the paper, and there's just an untruth in here. One of the first statements in this ad is, "You or your neighbor could lose a job, retirement benefits and health insurance." And again, I've repeatedly stated, we're not, nobody's going to lose their job, nobody's going to be fired for debt. We would be looking specifically and only at vacant positions, and only certain positions where we, where it would save the school system money and make sense in terms of providing quality service for the, for our students. And the rest of those comments, I think, are what you, would have already been addressed. You also have a copy, you've received most of this by email, but Mr. Eustace, I think, had asked for a copy of the standard benefits package, and this was just a sample from one school system that uses Appleton, kind of a sample of how they do an overview. Appleton provides an overview of the services, how much money is saved and what kind of services have been provided. And this last document, and this is a week and a half or so old, I think by now, so honestly, it may, there may be more on this list now, but these are specific school systems who are currently utilizing these services. I do think that there have been meetings held and other information that's been shared, but I think I've addressed most of the talking points. The only other thing I would mention is, in the presentation in our last board meeting, one of the things that was stated was that there are quote "horror stories" with Appleton employees, and then what was basically done next, what basically happened next is you were told a story about a situation in a neighboring school system that happened, that didn't involve Appleton employees, and there were two or three minutes spent on that. I think that's disingenuous to attribute, you know, horror stories with Appleton employees and then to tell a story about another company and their employees having absolutely nothing to do with Appleton. I think the intent was to paint a broad brush about contract services and what could happen, but we could do the same thing with public schools. It would be like saying that Scottsboro City Schools, there are horror stories about Scottsboro City Schools, and then giving an example from a school system, you know, next door to us. That would be disingenuous to, to do that, in my, in my opinion. The truth is horrible things do happen sometimes. My goal is to make sure that we provide a wonderful, positive learning environment, and environment in general, safe for our kids at all times, and however we do that, whoever is interacting with them, whether it be our employees, contract employees, volunteers, other people who happen to be attending events and programs at our schools, that we would continue to provide that safe environment for our kids. I do want to remind you, one thing that was stated was that Appleton is a business. Businesses make money. That, that is true. They do make a profit, but just a reminder, as they explained to us, a significant portion of their margin is reinvested in training, support and resources for their employees. So they do that, they take that very seriously and do that at a high level, and we became convinced of that as we were talking. I do want to mention that, just in closing, that while I am disappointed with the way this situation has been handled, I, I don't mind at all there being disagreement about the best way to move forward with things. All I ever expect is that people tell the truth. Integrity, honesty is very important to me, and we can disagree all day long and hopefully try to reach some consensus about what is the best thing to do for kids in the school system, but what is concerning and problematic for me is when misinformation is intentionally spread and communicated to put fear in, in the hearts of, of people, and I really think that's unfortunate. It is what it is, and we'll deal with it. I plan to continue to work with AEA and a professional and respectful man are moving forward despite how this has been handled, and hopefully whatever this board decides, we'll be able to move on from this and remember why we're all here, whether we're the superintendent or board members or teachers or C and P workers or custodians or bus drivers. We all provide a very important service, and all it would take was one group of employees not showing up for work one day, and we would find out just how important each category of employee is. So what we have, as I mentioned, is you have the contract. This is the original contract that was proposed. I really have not received or any questions from you guys. Mr. Esslinger did call me yesterday. One of the things he has asked about is, and I think maybe Ms. Thompson, you may have asked, you can correct me if y'all are not kind of on, your question is not along the same lines, is with the contract basically being open-ended, you know, so I think one of the, the way it was put to me is like, what if, you know, what if I wasn't here anymore and there was a new superintendent? Would, would the contract be revisited at that point, just to kind of hit the reset button? And so we discussed kind of what the options might be with that. The only other thing is there have been some questions about kind of how the process would work internally. The only thing I would ask to be considered there, we can probably make just about any adjustment we want to make to the contract, but as we add more and more restrictions in the, in, this is basically the agreement that the school systems that you see on that list are operating under as I understand it, that one of the things that would happen is we would lose some of the flexibility that is one of the main two reasons to do this, so we just have to be careful about that. But, but we can make any adjustments that we need to make, probably, I mean, within reason to the contract if there are questions. As I said, they're here to answer any questions you have and/or I'll do the best I can to answer any questions. answer any questions you have.
All right. I've been here here 50 minutes. I want to give board members a chance to think about a question for a moment. We're going to take a break. We'll come back at 5:00. We'll turn it until 5:00.
I have a question.
No, I'll ask you a question after the break. Thank you. We're turned to 5:00.